To the folks of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, invisible with liberty, justice for all.
Welcome everyone to your school. Mr. Rarick?
It's a good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to address parents' concerns or any questions they may have regarding the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut, in relation to our schools. We have a couple of guests here this evening to answer any questions that may arise. We have Chief Tom Blakie and Captain Patrick Jones from the Tiverton Police Department.
Can you hear us?
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll speak up.
We have a couple of guests here this evening. We have Chief Blakie, who's to my immediate left, and to his left is Captain Pat Jones from the Tiverton Police Department. And we're here tonight to really answer any questions you parents may have or have any concerns as a result of what transpired in Newtown, Connecticut over this past weekend. I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Okay. Dr. Lacken, you asked to have some...
Sure. So, yeah, I, the meeting was called partly at my request. I received some calls and questions from parents. And maybe, Mr. Rarick, you could try and review for us some of the things that might answer those questions. I think the thing that's clear, if anything is, it's a pretty incomplete picture so far, I think, for all of us. But one thing that I think we can, that we all realize is that things like this can happen at any time, at any place. It doesn't have to be a school. It doesn't have to be a school in a city or a school in the country. That, and that we, as much as we would like to predict what is going to happen and try and measure our responses to that, these things are ultimately unpredictable in that all of the precautions, I mean, what we try to take, can be overcome. That seems to be what has happened. But what also seems to be clear is that the decisions by teachers and the school's response really played a very vital role in limiting the casualties. So, the questions that were brought to me were, you know, what is the school's plan or all the schools' plans in regard to emergencies of this nature? Secondly, do the teachers have training in, you know, in the response that we have planned? And is there something more that we should be doing? Those seem to have been the three primary ones. And I'm sure there are other questions that members of the public have. But if we could just kind of go through those three things, I think that would sort of answer a lot of the questions that people have.
Sure. As far as plans go, we have a series of emergency protocols or plans that we have in place. Every year, we go through the plans. We submit them to the police department for their review. Without getting into specifics, the plans deal with a variety of crises that we may be faced with as a school, including an intruder alert. We have protocols in place for that as well. We have two annual lockdowns in every school per year where we follow the protocols as if there was an intruder in the building with a weapon of, we don't know what they have, there's an intruder with a weapon in the building. And we have protocols where we go into what's called lockdown procedures that we follow. Those procedures, again, have been given to us by the police department, told us, you know, work with us on what we need to do, how to do it, things of that nature. For example, at one point in time, we used to do something, we used to have the kids exit the building. And one of the things we found out is, in the case of a shooter, you don't want that because you could be going into harm's way. So, we've adapted earlier plans so, to take that into account. So, we, the plans are current. They're, again, on file with our police department. The only people that have access to the plans are myself, the principals, and the police department. So, it's a pretty tight circle. We go over, they have our floor plans on file, the fire department and police department online. So, they, today, we had an incident here at the high school. We were able to call up our floor plans right there on the scene. The chief had his computer, the fire chief. So, I believe we're pretty up to date as far as what our plans are. We train as far as drills go. Again, we do it twice a year. You know, should we do more than that? We felt, at least up to this point, two were adequate. Doesn't mean we can't do more than that. As far as teacher training, the training they have is, what do you do during the various scenarios that we practice? What, you know, they know they have to do A, B, C, or D. And again, in a lockdown, they have protocols that they need to follow to ensure their safety as well as the safety of their children.
Chief, you, I know, I think we had a quick discussion, you're in contact with various law officials throughout the country. So, that when, when you discuss those protocols, you do have the most up-to-date information.
Yes. Watching this tragedy unfold, we've compared notes with other law enforcement agencies. Actually, Tiverton's in the ninety, ninety percent of the schools in the country have a certain protocol. We're within that ninety percent. I feel very confident what we have in place right now. Even with the thing, the minor situation we had this morning, I watched, basically to analyze what was going on, and it was handled very well. Mr. Rarick had things organized. The teachers took their positions, the children left school, took a position, and he made a decision to evacuate, to end the school day at a certain point. But all things were considered. To answer your question, basically, we do, everyone compares notes. We're not going to reinvent this thing. We do have all the elements of the tragedy that took place in Connecticut. We have, we have a community, we have schools, we have people who do have a lot of guns in this community. So, we're going to, we're going to try to adjust to the situation as quick as we possibly can. We've had training within our, within our agency. Officer Cabral, Sergeant Cabral, is trained for active shooter. Should we have a scenario like that ever take place? God forbid. We will respond accordingly with our training.
So, just to, again, review some of the standard operating procedures right now. So, my understanding is the doors are opened for the students to arrive, and then they are locked.
Uh huh.
And then visitors have to be buzzed in.
That's correct.
By the secretary after he or she has positively identified that person.
That's correct.
And either has determined that there are concerns or no concerns.
Right. And we've gone over those procedures very closely with our secretaries because it is a busy situation in our schools. You know, we are schools, people are coming and going. We reiterate to the principals, and they reiterate it to their staff, what the protocols are. You have to ask, even if you know them, ask who they are, identify the person, state their business. If they have any question as to who the person is, they're to get their administrator, keep them outside, and then the administrator will determine whether or not that person should be allowed into the building.
Okay.
Then they have to come into the office. And if they're sign, you know, asking for a child, they should be signing them out at the main entryway where the secretary is. The younger children.
And if there is a, and I guess there's, maybe there are things you're not able to discuss publicly, but if there is a, something happens, a lockdown is called over the PA system, or, and that has a specific meaning for the teachers to respond in a specific way?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, we have, yes, to answer your question.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that we all, this is horrendous what happened there. I worked at Driffy after Columbine, during Columbine, we had all the drills, we had the lockdowns, we had the police in the school, we had state troopers in the school. But we found out, which a lot of people are saying, that keeping the kids connected, being ever vigilant, everybody being vigilant. And when I was in Fall River, it was stitches get snitches and rats get bats. That was a saying. We had to change that culture into caring means sharing. So, we had an anonymous box, and it was like, if you know, if you hear anyone, if a kid's upset, if he's going to do something, you don't have to say anything to us if you can't, but put it over there. And then we had the school resource officer. Now, don't think that that's a police officer strutting around the school with his gun. It's not. It's very different. It was in No Child Left Behind in 2001, safe in school, safe in drug-free schools. The chief and Mr. Rarick and I worked on that with Officer Cabral in 2001. And they said all the schools should have him. And that's to form relationships with the kids. That's to be friendly with the kids and walk around and be a go-to person. It's not the same as a cop that's going to give you a ticket or different things, look for drugs. He came to our substance abuse meetings, which is now Tiverton Prevention Coalition. I looked through my files, and I see schools adopt tougher policy on cyberbullying. Two thousand and eight, this is how soon we knew that you have to get in touch with those kids and help them. This is much worse than bullying, but you know that's where it might start. We have the SAD Students Against Destructive Decision. We have the Peer Helping Network. When I looked at the uniform chart of accounts, everyone talks about the budget, the budget, who's spending what, compare us to this and that. Well, we're always below the state average. But what you might not know is where we're a little bit higher is with the nurses, the guidance counselors, the school adjustment counselors, all the people that will get in touch with that kid that might be on the edge, that might be quiet and shy, be having trouble. And then we have the parents, the teachers, we just have the little kids coming in with their parents and grandparents, starting way down there. So, as a school system, I want you all to know that kneecaps are important to me, and POC, and computers. The most important thing to me is safety first. You all have a right to know we're doing everything we possibly can. I have a son with three kids at Ranger. Of course, he was upset. I had a long talk with him. I have a son who's a police officer. Who will be the first responder, like these men will, you can be sure. The head of the state police was on, he said, we're second responders. It's the local police that are going to be here to help us. So, we're going to do everything we possibly can to make sure this is the safest school that we can possibly give you. And the first step, Chief Blakie, I know you, is to get an officer back, here Officer Cabral or a school resource officer, within the schools to be there. And so, I thank you all for coming, but I can assure you, safety's first. We used to say, if the students don't feel secure, no learning will occur. If a kid's going to be looking around and the teachers are going to be nervous, there'll be no learning. So, this is our first priority. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on what you said? I was principal here at Tiverton High School when the Columbine incident took place, which really was the, one of the first, at least in my memory, of such a tragedy. And one of the things, we did a lot of things to increase our security. But one of the things, going to the safety meetings that these gentlemen go to quite frequently, you know, that the FBI had for us, is that they told us at the time is communication. Because at Columbine, those two young men talked about what they were going to do. And the signs were there, and no one paid attention to them. So, we've spent a lot of time over the last few years with the organizations that Mrs. Black just mentioned, especially at the high school level, but also throughout the elementary levels, is to, from our teachers to our kids at our schools, is to report things and to talk to an adult. And we have been able to circumvent, obviously, nothing to this extent, but when there have been issues where kids are uncomfortable, they have come forward to their administration, to the administrators. And if necessary, we would go to the police force. And we work very closely with them. And I'm pleased, I'm very pleased that we have a very good working relationship with the chief, the captain, Sergeant Cabral, and the police department, because it makes it easier. We understand what they need, and they understand what we need. But we also have, at all our schools, crisis, we have a crisis intervention policy to go, Jerry asked before, what are some of the things we have? Crisis intervention policy was an offshoot. Marla Schreffler, who was one of our school psychologists, she just retired, after Columbine says, we need to do more in identifying our students. And we put this policy in place, I want to say in '02 or '03, where any child, there are protocols we have to follow at every school, if we feel a child is not connect, is in crisis. And there are steps that we have to take. And in some cases, it's just meeting with the parent and giving them some advice on how to handle their child. In other cases, we've had to have children hospitalized due to their, due to the nature of recommend, we can't do that, we recommend it, where children needed, you know, medical care. But that was an offshoot, and we still have that policy in place. So, we're constantly, the key to trying to avoid what happened, or at least one of the things we can really work on, is communication internally as a district amongst teachers and students, but also with parents, to let us know if, you know, there's something that, you know, that's bothering your son or daughter, so that we can address it in an appropriate manner. Because that's how, that's how you can avoid an awful lot of things. And I think we've done a good job of that in the last ten or twelve years since Columbine.
One of the things on the phone calls I've been getting is there really is a lot of misinformation out there. I hear this, I hear that. So, I really, once everyone's had a chance up here to speak, I'd love for you guys to have the opportunity, please come up and ask us questions. We have our law enforcement here, we have our administrators here, because there is a lot of misinformation, I think, that sometimes is out there. And this is a great opportunity, and we welcome and encourage anything that you guys have heard that you want to check on and say, oh, I heard, one of the things I heard was the doors are propped open during the day at the high school. Well, come up, tell us you heard that, let's address it. Let's, you know, so, really, this is an opportunity for you to feel safe and hear those things. And I think there are some miscommunications and misunderstandings. And once everyone here, obviously, has had a chance to speak, I really would love to hear what you all have to say.
Or perhaps we think, or perhaps we think the doors are locked and they're being propped, which we need to know about too.
Exactly, exactly.
There are, no, there are, kids being kids, they'll, they'll prop the door to go out, get some air, pop back in, and they don't close, you know, they shouldn't be doing that. And we've talked, again, some of the things we've done already, remind our teachers, especially when the warm weather. You're going to have to keep those doors closed, you know, in the gym. It does get warm in there. But those are the types of things that, you know, you're constantly on.
Do the cameras help now with that, too?
The cameras have helped with, at least at the high school, with students leaving without permission.
And perhaps propping the door to come back in?
Right. Yeah. Plus, the cameras will also help us, we believe, identify today's perpetrator.
Okay.
So, if I could just walk through, again, your response. You feel that we do have it, you know, we have policies and procedures in place right now for the routine school day that should protect us to the extent that we can, given the
Given our
Fixed architecture and sort of the fact that it's a school, not a
And our elementary schools are more secure than the high schools.
Right.
Because of the way we built them. We built them with the traps.
Right.
You know, you have to get through two sets of doors, as opposed to the older schools, you know, high school and the middle school, they're buzzed, that's correct, you know, it's true. We buzz them and then come on in. I mean, but that just, that's the design that we have right now.
Okay. And we have a response plan for various scenarios, including a intruder, armed intruder?
Absolutely.
That the teachers do a lockdown drill twice a year.
That's correct.
So, these are all the fixed things. Are there, so, there are specific RIDE security mandates as well?
Well, that's, that's really their mandate, is that, at one time was just report the number of fire drills.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have lockdowns, and then you have to have also, as part of the fire drills, you need two lockdowns, and you need a couple of what's called blocked entrances. In other words, students normally go out certain doors.
Right.
A couple times a year, you have to say, no, you can't go here. Next, it's not, do you have to go somewhere else?
What do you do next?
So, that's really what, when RIDE says regulations, that's really what they're referencing.
Okay.
And that was in '07. They brought those down.
'06, '07.
So, I guess my, my next question is far more open-ended and not one I expect an answer to. And I recognize that no one's going to double the budget of the school committee or, or anything in town. But are there things that we should be doing more? Should we be doing more education, more outreach to students, or to teachers, or to community members? Because clearly, you know, the four shootings in the last few years, they haven't been students. That's, that's not been the issue. And it's, so, should we be doing more education, or should we be exploring other security mechanisms or apparatus, work cameras? I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just thinking it's something that we should be considering.
And I would say that's one of the reasons why we're, that's one, I'm sorry, that's one of the reasons why maybe we're here tonight, because I certainly don't, I believe we're doing as well as we can do with what we have. You know, I don't believe there's anything else we can do as far as security goes. As far as outreach and education, I'm sure that's something we can talk about as, as a body, and working with, you know, the chief and the captain on, as to what that outreach might look like. But as far as what we can do right now, I think we're pretty much maxed out as far as, I've said it to one of the reporters, if my daughter was 14, if we lived here in town, I would have no problem sending her here, completely safe. Not only is it safe, it's a great place to get an education. And I have three grandchildren, all the same age within a year. I would have, have no problem going to any one of our elementary schools. I would, safety is not something, I mean, I'd send them and wouldn't think twice about it. I think that's the best answer I can give right now.
Right.
That's how com, can anything happen? Yes. Are we doing everything I think we can do up to what we can do?
The limitations that we have.
I think we're, we're there, where our limitations might be.
Right. But I, you know, and the, and the answer may be in the end, if there's more that we can be done, we can't do it. But I think it's still something to consider. Is there more we could do?
I think one of the things that we, we probably should look at is to try to find a way to bring the SRO back to full-time status.
And the SRO just for
School resource, I'm sorry, talk education, school resource officer. Right now, we just have Ken once, one, one, one day a week. We used to have him
And only at the high
And only at the high school. Before, we had him every day, and he'd be at all the schools, doing outreach things, working with kids.
Wonderful.
And their parents.
And staff.
And that's why I would support it. Not because of Sally said, it's a hired gun, so to speak.
No.
That's not the work Ken did. Ken did a lot of great stuff with our children and our parents. And if, in the, you know, could we do something in the short term? Well, could it be to try to find a way?
To bring him back.
To bring that back. That would be one of the short-term doable things I'd like to try to see that we could do.
I just, while you were talking, it came up with a que, um, when we do these lockdown drills, is, are you guys there to watch?
No. Ken, you may be.
I have been at a couple of middle schools. Sometimes we try to arrange We do try to arrange it for when my schedule permits me to be here. It doesn't always work out that way. But I can say is the last one at the middle school went really well. The team, the only problems we had were with the subs, and even they tried to do a good job. It was a, we did a lockdown code red, and the kids were quiet, they knew where to be, and they acted like it was the real thing.
Because I could certainly see that, something we could do more of, is if we are going to have a lockdown, let's make sure we have law enforcement in the building that day.
Yeah. And I hate to sort of, you know, I think that the priority I would make is actually where the most vulnerable students are. I, I'm not saying that, you know, any of our students are more important than other students, but if we could try and make sure that, particularly in the elementary schools where there's going to be, you know, you're going to really rely on the decisiveness, the calmness of the staff and the teachers. You know, a teenager, older child, of course, you know, would be vulnerable too, but is going to be thinking with their own mind in a more rational, self-survival kind of way. That might be another, you know, depending on what the cost of that would be, that would be another, other than reestablishing the SRO as a full-time position, but really making sure that we're looking at these, those lockdown drills and making sure that they're accomplishing what they're hopefully supposed to accomplish. I think I've said everything I possibly can.
Very nice. Thank you. Karen?
Excuse us.
That's all right.
Hi. Mr. Cabral and I would like to say, for the elementary principals, we welcome the Tiverton Police to come in and to do our lockdown drills with us. We've been practicing our lockdown drills without the law enforcement there. Sometimes, at the elementary level, when we practice them, I know if the children see police come
That'd be a distraction.
With the uniforms on, for some children, it causes anxiety.
Right.
We're practicing a lockdown drill.
So, maybe not have the uniform.
And they see them come with uniforms. So, it's just something to consider.
Give them a nice costume.
At the youngest level, yeah.
Isn't that a good thing, though, because it isn't being a situation of anxiety anyway?
Well, when we're introducing it to practice, maybe for like the first time, maybe to practice it and introduce it without, and maybe, maybe a later time.
Integrate it.
So, usually, a drill is to give you something to fall back on.
Right, right.
Where you don't have to think. So, actually provoking anxiety for the drill would probably not be a fantastic thing to do. What you really want to do is say, you know, I'm feeling anxiety, what do I do? I default to, you know, not standing there in sheer terror, but to going to the teacher, going to the quiet place in the room or whatever.
Well, and I think you're right. If we have a school resource officer that's, that we know, that they know, and the first time you introduce them, they're maybe in a suit and tie or whatever. And then the next time they come, they know their face, and you slowly, okay, now they're in uniform. Okay.
If I may, I think the fact, communication is extremely important, Mr. Rarick. When we have an officer in that building, we might not be talking about a mass shooting situation. We could be talking about a domestic situation. These children of all ages, all levels will be communicating. And I, in my experience, whether in this community or my last community, the SRO has been valuable in the fact that even in the summer months, the kids who are comfortable with this officer will come to the station and seek out this particular officer and have communication with him because of the rapport they've built in the school during the school year, having lunch with the child.
Yeah.
Just interacting at that level, certainly not a hired gun. But that's what we've found in the past, not just in Tiverton, but all SROs that I've worked with, and certainly in my last community. I think it's a valuable asset to all communities. And I think the key, Mr. Rarick, is definitely communication. That day-to-day, constant interaction is so, so important that we're not just somebody stopping a car. We are out there, Sergeant Cabral, going out there, sitting with the kids as they leave the parking lot, make sure the compliance was something as simple as a seatbelt. It's not, it will bother them we care about you.
Right.
And these are the things that we'll get across, and they will talk to us. And when these siblings go home and speak with their other younger children, they'll have the contact or the attention of their brothers and sisters, and they'll interact, and they, they'll know that whomever their SRO is, is a good person you can talk to. And I think that's something that we should look at. It's a minimal cost. I understand everything's about our money.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's one thing. And then I do agree with the interaction, having, having law enforcement present during these drills. I think that's valuable. Because we learn every day.
Well, hopefully, we'll learn something about what we should do better.
We're not reacting here. We, we've done this, this book that was handed out to the schools, every classroom had a book, a protocol for every disaster, whether it be a tornado or everything, was handed out through, through the schools back in 2006. So, this isn't something new, please. This is something we've been practicing for many years.
Okay.
I'm sorry, five minutes. To reiterate what the chief's saying, of course, these incidents are nothing less than terrorist attacks in our schools. That's the way that we perceive them. And unfortunately, the terrorists involve our own citizens. I know the trains of authority, just like after 9/11, they came out with phrases, if you see something, say something. And much like what's been said at the board today and by the police chief, you are our front line of defense. You need to tell us if you see something. If you see a change in behavior in your child, if your child's being bullied, if there's something going on in, that your child's coming home, second only to you, the educators are going to know your child best. You need to let your educator, let your school know, let your counselor know, and then they'll make the determination whether it's a police matter or not. But it's valuable intelligence that we need to know to prevent these incidents. That's the best chance that we have. As far as the drills, we definitely want to be involved in the drills. I would have no objection with the chief, obviously, is, when you're, when you see police officers on the road, when your children see police officers, they see them dressed as I am, as we are today. I wouldn't have a problem sending, and I'm sure with the chief's permission, sending all the police officers to meet their children at school. So, they know that when they see a police officer, this means safe.
That's right.
This means okay.
Yep.
That, and I have no objection, obviously, with the permission of the chief to send Sergeant Cabral in a suit and a tie. But on the day of a critical incident, that's not how we're coming.
Right.
As a matter of fact, we might even become scary on the news.
Right.
So, it's good to get your students, your children accustomed to what we work like.
And what you, what you stand for.
Exactly. That this means safe, that this is good, that if, not only in school, but they missed the bus, they know it, and they see a police car to wave, wave us down. The chief authorized, after the terrible incidents of last week, and I'm sure as some of you know, that we were at the schools on Monday and Tuesday, unintrusively that we were at the schools on Monday and Tuesday, unintrusively, just kind of parked off to the side. I can't tell you how many police officers came back from the station, and your children were given them pipe bobs. So it was, it was a good experience, and it was a great idea. But that's what we represent, and that's what we want to have for your children, that this school is safe and that we are here to ensure that safety along with the educates that work for your school.
Just like to make one more comment, which is that if you see something, say something just doesn't apply to students, parents. It's really the entire community.
Absolutely.
We are our own, our own security net in this town.
Absolutely.
I stole that from the trains at the park.
I like it.
When you drive the trains or on the buses, that's their line.
I like it.
Play reason is the sincere phone flag.
Rob Carol.
That's why I took it from them, but it works.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
Carol?
I just want to let you know that I understand and share your concerns. What happened on Friday was not only every parent's worst nightmare, but every educator's worst nightmare. And all of our teachers and our administrators take safety very seriously. I have no doubt in my mind that every teacher in every one of our buildings would, without a moment's thought, risk their own lives to save any of our children. Because when they're in our buildings, they are our children. I know better than most the safety protocols and discussions and practices that are already in place. I know you probably have questions and concerns, and I'm really here tonight to hear what your concerns are and to perhaps learn how we might make the children even safer. If you see some weaknesses that you think we can address, please tell us, and we'll have that discussion and together come up with some better solutions.
Yanni?
Well, okay.
Okay, and who else, who would like to speak, please?
Just come up to the podium.
Just come up to the podium.
Don't be shy.
Give the mic.
Bill Garlak. First of all, just two things, real three things. Thank you for coming out tonight. I think it's important to bring the community together like this, so I appreciate everyone's time. Second, I love the idea of a student resource officer moving to full-time. And I think as we head into the budget process, we should give serious consideration to that. And then third, you know, as far as the processes and protocols, I understand we rehearse twice a year.
For the lock...
The drills.
For lockdowns.
For lockdowns. Perhaps there's an opportunity to expand that to at least quarterly, you know, as we're talking about potentially reintroducing police officers into the mix. You know, and I have no idea how much disruption that would cause to the academic day, but...
I'm going to ask you guys, if you don't mind, to come up to the table and sit with us because they can't hear you there. That way you can use a mic. Thank you.
My name is Bill Garlak. I have two kids that go to Fort Barton. I'm also on the town council. So I was saying thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Just a couple of points. First of all, I love the idea of a full-time student resource officer and would love to, you know, talk that through as we head into the budget process. The second thing is that perhaps we could look at increasing the frequency of the lockdown drills from at least twice a year to quarterly, just to make sure that everyone is up to speed on that, the kids feel comfortable. If we're talking about introducing the police officers into the mix more, that would certainly give more opportunity for that to happen. Instead of just twice a year, we might miss the boat on that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. I have Joy Gilkison, and I have two children at Ranger. And my question is Ranger and the high school are basically only separated by a football field. And so when something happens at the high school, obviously, I'm just as concerned as a high school parent. Is there anything in place, or does there need to be anything in place where, you know, there's a bomb scare here, is that going to affect Ranger? Or there's a shooter here, is that going to affect the children at Ranger?
I'll just say this. I've been a proponent of trying to get that dirt road between the junior, the middle school paved for years simply because it keeps traffic off the main road and like a campus effect on this end of town, it keeps the buses out of harm's way, et cetera. We were fortunate enough a year ago to get that traffic light after a few years of battling with that. Still, I would still like to have that connection. It would give Mr. Rerrick, who's in charge of where the children go, the opportunity to have another location. So if there is harm's way going toward one school, we can deter, direct it to another area. But to answer that question, I think Mr. Rerrick would have to be better equipped to answer that particular part of it.
Well, like as far as the security part, do we need to have a lockdown at Ranger when there's something happening at the high school because they're so close?
If there is a problem here, there's going to be, we'll be focusing here. But we will try to generate whatever resource we have to make sure it doesn't spill over or nothing, no one leaves this area because it's too hot, using a police term, and they go to another school to try to do some damage. We would try to make sure we can actually get some resources.
We have steps in place, depending on the situation. If we felt another school was going to be impacted, we have protocols that will follow.
How would you get the children out of Ranger if the high school was impacted? There's no other exit.
That's part, well, it depends on what the issue is, number one. Number two, the question is, how do we, you know, if something happened here, what do we do with Ranger? The incident here would dictate what we do with Ranger, what we would do there. We have protocols in place. If there was an intruder here, we then activate certain protocols in our schools, all our schools.
I understand that. I'm just saying Ranger in particular because it's so close. So if there are bullets flying, you know, is there something special just for Ranger?
We would have protocols that they would need to follow.
So yes, but...
Yes.
And specifically, talk about what they are.
Yeah, and there's, because of geography and the way that the, not the schools are laid out, but the neighborhood, I mean, we only have one, one road that's North Brayton.
So maybe if I could gloss your answer, that clearly the two schools are very close together. Depending on the nature of the incident at the high school, there may be little chance of an impact on Ranger, or there may be a substantial chance of an impact on Ranger, and that would define the response up to, including, I would imagine, locking down.
Yes.
Evacuation, calling state police, whatever, you know, calling other towns, law enforcement. Is that all correct?
If necessary, to bring in other outside resources. We do have mutually packed with every surrounding community, including Fall River. And we would utilize something like that.
That actually, that's a great question. Someone had sent me a message via Facebook asking, asking the same thing, saying, not just Ranger, but if something happens like that happened at the high school today and all your resources are at the high school, does that provide an opportunity for, to have something, havoc happen at one of the other schools? Not just Ranger, but Fort Barton, Pecassett Middle School, so...
We wouldn't want to limit it just to schools. I mean, some bad guys will actually call an alarm or crash somewhere so they can rob a bank on the other side of town too.
Okay. So you guys are aware of it? You're...
Yes.
Okay.
They have that ready.
We try to have, we would be calling standby with mutual aid, whether it be state police SWAT team or another mutual municipality.
One thing I would like to add about Ranger, all our trans, all our walkie-talkies, anything that happens at the high school, we're picking those walkie-talkie conversations up at Ranger. So we're really in constant conversation, not conversation, constant contact with the high school. So if there's something going on at the high school, we know it firsthand from our walkie-talkies. Same thing, if something happens at Ranger, the high school, because we're so close, the high school's picking up those conversations.
So you could just hit a button and have a lockdown at any time?
Absolutely. And we're just monitoring the walkie-talkies. And any trans, any walkie-talkie conversation that happens at the high school, we're listening to at Ranger. Same thing, anything we go through our walkie-talkies at Ranger, the high school's picking up.
Okay.
So we've got that immediate conversation as far as monitoring what's going on, especially at the high school.
Okay, that's good to know.
And today, and today, for example, we were in constant contact with the middle school and Ranger, letting them know what was going on. So they knew exactly what was, you know, so that they know, you know, we have it contained, the situation, what the situation was, and that everybody's safe. And so that was communicated immediately to both, both schools, to both administrations at the schools. So they were aware of what was going on in live, in real time.
If the police are on scene and feel that there's a threat to schools with the superintendent and the command staff that are there, we'll lock all the schools down.
And we take our cue. We do have our policies and our protocols. But if there's an intruder, if it ever came to that, we follow what these gentlemen here tell us to do. I mean, we have our, we do our drills, we know what we have to do. But when it comes to safety, we, they tell us, and we listen. We, there's no debate about it at all. For example, today, the folks from the state fire marshal's office said, "Leave the cars." Here at the school, the kids couldn't take the cars until after they were searched by the dogs. Not searched, but the dogs never had to go through. So we get the kids, put them on the bus, told them they can come back later. But that was law enforcement. We defer to them. They're the experts, we're not. And we follow, you know, what they tell us to do in these situations. And thankfully, we work, we know each other, we're working, we're right there, looking at each other. But that's what we do. We defer to them in all, in all cases when it comes to our safety and our security.
When is our children's safety concerned?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joy.
Depending on what's happening at each school, it's either we want to have a hard lockdown or a soft lockdown. You know, with what happened today, we didn't, we didn't determine that there was need for any lockdown, except for the security measures that we had in place.
I don't think I realized that there was walkie-talkies and that you guys were listening to what's going on. You know, you knew that had to be there.
Don't like that. I don't know, we're just opening the plate. We can't open the plate.
Oh, absolutely. The high school and Ranger are on the same wavelength. So we're picking up all their transmissions and we're picking up all our transmissions. Most of the walkie-talkie situations that happen at Ranger is when the students go out to the phys ed. The phys ed teacher and for recess time. The phys ed teacher and the supervisor at recess always have a walkie-talkie, so they have contact with the schools. If there's an incident, the nurse has to go out, then there's immediate contact, and the nurse can be, you know, either out to a phys ed class or to, or to recess, depending on the type of situation.
Mr. Rerrick, could you just please tell about the meetings you had Monday morning? Because a lot of people don't know about that.
Oh, certainly. Over the weekend, you know, as Friday evolved and we became aware of the enormity of the tragedy, I sent an email out via Connect Ed to all our parents. We had telling parents what to expect on Monday. We, I was in constant communication with my principals over the weekend, preparing for what we call, you know, a re-entry day. What are we going to do in our schools on Monday morning? We met with, the principals met with their staffs before the start of school. Mrs. Black and I were able to attend the high school, middle school, and Pecassett schools opening. And the principals reviewed the protocols once again with the staff. And then they spent time talking along with our student assistance counselor, our guidance counselors, our school psychologists, on going over again how to talk to our students in these types of, in this type of incident. How we handle elementary students, obviously, is different than how we talk to high school students. But at every level, we went through that as a reminder, this is what you need to do. And everything, you know, according to the principals, we met on Tuesday to go over what transpired on Monday. And, you know, all our students, our attendance was normal for this time of year. And everything seemed to go relatively smoothly. Our parents had confidence in the schools and what we do. That was evident by the good attendance. And I know there were some concern, you know, questions or whatever, which is normal. We fielded a couple at our office, and I know the principals did it at theirs. But overall, Monday went very well. Unfortunately, because we as a district have handled nothing to the, what happened in Connecticut. But we've lost staff members unexpectedly. We've lost students unexpectedly. And we've dealt with it over time, and we've developed protocols based on best practices. So we felt very comfortable with Monday, and it seemed, and it seems like everything has worked out relatively well, as smooth as can be. And I will say this, and I know as parents, I had to stop, like I said, I stopped watching after a certain point. I couldn't watch it on TV anymore, the reporting. Our teachers were very shaken, a lot of them. And they came to work, and they did what they're paid to do, and that's to teach and work with our kids. And I was very proud of them, as I was of our students, but also of our staff, because it was an assault on their fellow on another school, which personalized it even further for them. It's awful what happened at Aurora, Virginia Tech. But in a school, an elementary school, it really hit home to the, to the staff. So they've had a tough week as well and have been going. We're in uncharted, like I told the staffs that we were able to speak to, we're in uncharted territory. This is new for all of us. This level of terror, as the captain referenced it, it is a terrorist attack. And it was, and it was on our children. And it was horrific. And as I said before, hopefully, well, we can do what we can do here. The point of the meeting tonight is to get input, to try to do what we can do to make it safer here for our kids. But this has to be a greater conversation. And it comes from residents, to our elected officials, whether it's at the town level, state level, federal level. We need, this is more than just banning guns. This is a big issue, multi-pronged issue, that we have to address as a nation if we're going to avoid something like this again, that we saw over the weekend.
Jim?
Hi. Hi. My name's Pam Poli, and I have a daughter in Ranger School. And my understanding that after the bomb scare today was that the high school students were put on the bus and they went home. What would you do in an elementary school situation where there are young kids and there isn't anyone at home?
We wouldn't send them home. We have, again, not to, I know I'm talking in general terms. We do have protocols in place if that happened. We wouldn't send them home because they are too young.
Nobody would be there.
But we can't tell you where we...
We can't, we're not going to say, we're not going to tell you what we would do, but we do, we have accounted for that. And we do have steps in place that we would follow.
So how, how would I, as a parent, find out where it is that I would go?
We would communicate through, via our Connect Ed system, phone message and a text message. And the messages would be explicit as to what you would need to do. For example, in the middle school a couple of years ago, we told parents that we were going to dismiss, it was towards the end of the day, so we were able to do it. But we had protocols. We had the parents come, they had to sign their child out. They had to show their ID to school officials that were responsible for that. And we dismissed that way. You know, a lot of kids went on the bus, but we also had, you know, we were able to dismiss the parents that were able to come. That was a little different because we were at the end of the day, but that's what we would do. We'd communicate that way to you. And also the press. We would also get it out to the press at some point to say, "This is, you know, what you would need to do." But we would contact you first. Parents would be the first to know.
But, but we are aware they can't just be sent.
We can't...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Send them home to an empty house.
They're taken to a safe place.
Yes.
And then you're notified, and then you can pick them up.
And then you would, then you can pick, then you would be allowed to pick them up. If we deemed that you couldn't go back. And if parents wanted to take them at that point, even if we said it was safe, obviously, parents know best, they can sign their child and take them home. We would allow that. We will never keep a parent from...
Well, when they're in lockdown, you...
No, in lockdown, parents can't come. There are protocols there. When we, when we go into a lockdown, and we had that at the middle school, we had to keep the parents on Quintel Drive to us, at a certain point. They couldn't come in. And we was working with the police department, and it worked well. We were able to execute our evacuation plan and got everybody home.
So if we're going to evacuate them to a safe location... If we're going to evacuate them to a safe location, if we can safely release them, we will. But we have to make sure, like you said, they are safe. And then who's, who they're being released to is appropriate, that we have, you know, because we have a lot of children who can't be released to certain individuals.
And what we, and at the middle school, we can talk about it.
Right.
Because it's no secret. We stayed with those children that we waited.
They just waited till they came.
Patty and Patrick waited for over an hour and a half in some cases for parents to come get their... You know, we stayed with them.
But I think we're, we're talking about a situation where they would be actually moved from the building. from the building.
Yes, yeah.
But we won't send them home to an empty house.
Right.
Yeah.
Certainly not.
The other thing is too, I, I understand that you can't release all the information on what your procedures are and everything, but are there some things that can be sent home to parents? I, I, as a parent, after the whole thing happened, I had no idea about the drills until I saw Deborah Geist on the news talking about the lockdown drills. And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that felt that way also, that they don't even know that, about any of the procedures that are going on in the school to help prevent some of that.
We, we certainly can send something home to parents, you know, what to expect, number of fire drills, things of that nature. But we also, uh, would like to keep close to the vest as to when we're gonna do them. Uh, we don't wanna let people know that, you know, we're doing these things. Uh, but, uh, yeah, we could, that's one of the things we can look at, certainly. And at the beginning of the year, say, your child can be expected to participate in the following drills.
In these things, yeah.
We certainly could do that.
Okay. Um, I had one other question, I can't remember what it is now. If I think about it, I'll come back. If you think, come on back. Thank you.
So, and actually, with regard to that, since you can't remember your question, which is perfectly fine, this is not the end of the conversation either.
Right.
Our addresses, phone numbers, Mr. Rierick's completely accessible, the principals are completely accessible.
Which is accessible, I'm sure you gave it to him.
So, you know, we, we will continue to entertain questions as long as there are questions, not necessarily tonight, but.
Absolutely.
Jim?
And, and I'm sorry, before Jim comes up, and I ask anyone at home, or here, you might be a little standoffish, cause even though we like each other, we maybe kind of put people off and not wanna speak. Email us, or, or, or call us, and, and with your question, or like Deb mentioned, the doors aren't chalked. Let us know, so we can, you know, no one's gonna say, oh, Mrs. Smith said that, okay. No, we need to know these things, so we can make the school safer. So please, communicate to us any way you feel free. Sorry, Jim.
Hello, James Ruder, also on dividend town council. I myself was a teacher, uh, for quite a few years, and I myself had also lost a student after I left teaching. I found that, um, he had, uh, passed away in a drunk driving accident. He was the one driving, and he was also the one that was drunk, unfortunately. And I also, I was gonna prepare a statement to read, I didn't have any time today at work. And I've already heard a lot of the things I was actually gonna talk about, um, already mentioned tonight, which is great. Mr. Rierick had mentioned it, um, Mrs. Black had mentioned those things. And of course, our police department had mentioned those things. What some of those things are, is yes, we have to also make sure we take a non-emotional approach, um, to this problem. I mean, and me by that, we have to also make sure we think rationally. And some of the things we have to really think about is, we did have a tragedy not that long ago, where, um, one person did lose their life, as their son had murdered their father, and attempted to murder their mother. And one of those people was a teacher of mine. And the root probably cause of that problem is mental illness. And, um, I believe, from what I've learned about what happened recently, mental illness was also possibly another problem, this young gentleman in Connecticut. So I think some of the things we need to concentrate on is definitely getting help from the community. And, um, I, I didn't, what I didn't know was having, that we'd have a, a good amount of counselors here in all of our schools, that's correct. I worked in schools where there was inadequate help, and there were kids in need, who probably would someday be, uh, someone who would probably act out in a extreme way. Would it be shooting, I don't know, drive into something, I don't know. But there are those individuals, there may not be a large percentage of the student population, but there are, there are small populations of individuals where the mental illness probably does occur. And I think awareness, and being able to identify those individuals who, and I think it's especially important to understand that it's not the people who act out all the time behavioral wise that are the problem, it's the people who do not. The ones who are quiet, those are the ones who you do not know need help, and they probably need the most. And I think it'd be very good, if it is possible, I'm not sure if we need to strengthen our counseling in our schools, but maybe make sure that people in our community are aware, or we make sure that we help our police department and help our schools identify the individuals who are in need, and so we can prevent, uh, these type of things from happening. And besides saving the life of the person who, who is in, in need, but also save the others who might also be at risk. And I want, thank you for all having this meeting tonight, and, uh, that's all, I'll say, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ruder, thank you for those comments. I, you know, I think you're right, that if there is a single theme to, you know, sort of extreme behavior like this, it's probably a combination of mental illness and extreme social isolation, disconnectedness, and that's sort of what we need to be most aware of.
Um, I'm a student at the high school, and I have two brothers and sisters, Cody, Tripp. And, uh, I don't know what the protocol is, but do students just lock down in one room at the elementary school? Cause that might ease their anxiety, if they lock down in all different rooms, you know, practice doing that. Cause if they lock down in the classroom, but the, uh, incident happens while they're in the art room, they might be a little scared, you know? They don't know what the protocol is. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Good suggestion. Good question. Yes, good question.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Petosky, I have a student at Fort Barton, and also at the middle school. Um, my question is, today it seemed like it was a student probably playing a joke, or I don't know what they would call it, but with, with the bomb scare, is anything being planned to talk to the middle school students and the high school students? And maybe you're already doing this, just to let them know? Cause I talk to my children about this and the impact of, you know, it's not a joke, you can't, um, say things like that i- in a school. And, and I explained to them what happened on Friday. I think I was just a little shocked that a student would do something like this, especially this close, or after what happened last Friday. So I just didn't know if anything was planned to speak to the older children. I think middle school students are old enough and, and, and high school students.
Uh, we certainly have plans to speak to the high school students. Um, I can talk to Mrs. Mitchell and see, you know, to have her address, leave it up to her, Mr. Frerich, as to how they would like to, I don't think it would hurt to remind them, you know, what you say matters.
Right.
And, uh, when you do something like this, there are repercussions, because, um, if we find the person, there'll be legal repercussions from the gentleman here in Blue and the courts, as well as from this body here. We are not, we will act swiftly, and immediately, as far as that goes, as far as we did it.
And probably remind them that unfortunately, you know, those kind of bad choices will have legal consequences.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. And, and, and as I said, I said to someone, I'm very disappointed, because we have a great group of kids, we have great kids in our community. I'm very disappointed that one person.
Right.
One did something so ill-advised.
Yeah, and the resources that they used up, they should know about the resources and, and taking and using those resources.
Absolutely correct.
So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly Jermaine, and I have a son that goes to the Ranger School and also the middle school. And, um, Monday morning, when I was dropping him off, I was glad to see the officers out front, however, um, I was a little, I was a little shocked that the side door going into the middle school was still open, and teachers can, you know, go in through the middle school. I think I'd feel a little bit more at ease if they were all going in through one, you know, the front door.
Absolutely. I'll, we'll make sure if that hasn't been.
Has been addressed, and they are not using just the front doors.
Okay. So it's just the one door now? Uh, the other thing, um, I know Fall River has, you know, sixteen schools and there's police officers at all the schools, but it just, it frustrates me that everything's the budget, the budget, the budget. I would feel so much safer knowing that there was an officer at the schools, um, just as a parent, so.
There's no question that this is budget driven, that's why we don't have an SRO currently. Captain and I were just doing math this afternoon to see what it would cost, and we've come up to approximately, minimally a hundred thousand dollars for the remainder of the school year, to have an officer there, around six hours a day, for the schools we have.
I understand that, but, um.
I'm not saying that's.
Right, I mean, you can't put a price on saving our children's lives.
I totally agree.
And, and I, I agree, I think the discussion is what do we need, and then we have that, how do we pay for it, discussion later.
The best thing.
Right, exactly. Yeah, thank you.
And I think having, um, in response to that statement, it, I think it's very, uh, refreshing to see town council members present.
Yes, it is.
And some have, have already spoken, so it makes the conversation much easier, um, having representatives from the council here.
May I also, we're not reacting with this SRO, this has been on like plate.
Absolutely.
To get the gentleman out of the schools.
Definitely.
Um, where I came from, there is still an SRO in the school. This was driven by budget, and that's why we, we had to take our priority, we had a high number of increased house breaks, I had to put a man on that, and unfortunately, that was the casualty, was the, the SRO. Never my intent, always my intent, Ms. Black, we've talked about it many, many times in the years, to put someone.
Every week when I see you.
We do talk about it, gotta get something back. But anyhow, that is, uh, we're not reacting here, this has been a long, a longstanding goal of the police department.
And, and ours, we're always talking about.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Lori Vry, and I have, uh, three children in the school system. I have a question in regards to, you said in two thousand and six, you implemented a, uh, group of protocols from different situations that are occurring, and the teachers have these protocols. Do these teachers know these protocols? Or, I mean, um, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're faced with one protocol right now, but I'm sure there are several within that book. Are these teachers familiar with all these protocols?
They're not with, I would say, not with every individual. For example, there's things in there about, and I'm not making light of it, rock slides, earthquakes. We don't prac, we don't practice those things. We practice, uh, we have, uh, reaction to what I would call things that we would probably see. Intruders, unauthorized people around the schools, um, bomb threats, things that schools generally deal with, that we practice, we have protocols for. We don't.
But you said you only had two drills a year, correct?
Well, for lockdowns.
So you do have other.
Well, for lockdown drills, and there are other drills, yes. We do have, to answer your question, yes, we do.
Okay. Um, the other question was in regards to, unfortunately, this, this incident, he broke through glass, and, uh, very first thing I noticed at Ranger Schools, it's all glass. The doors were all glass. Um, pretty, but, uh, not helpful in the situation, I would think, but I don't know. Is there, is there other safety measures as far as our door systems go?
If I may, we cannot make this a prison.
Right.
You don't want that, I don't want your children don't want that. I don't have the answer for you. We try to make the things as secure as possible. Um, looking at the school, they buzz people in, at what point do you lock the door and let one student in? At a time, uh, the morning, the rush is coming in, the people are leaving. These are all times that people are vulnerable, but the, the fact is, we can't have one person come in, uh, at a time from, or empty a school bus off, when, we just can't do it, the whole school day is lost. I'm not saying we can look at these things, uh, Mr. Rierick and I discussed this Friday, we spoke, first thing, I went back to my office after finding the news, we communicated, and, um, I started thinking over the weekend, should we have something like some of the jewelry stores have, where you go into that cage, and you're locked in, you're locked out, you can't let yourself in or out? We have more time to determine who this person is. When the person, if God forbid, someone should try to exit, we capture them there, they can't get out without someone out of that room hitting a buzzer to let them out. It's possible. I didn't know.
And we built, and when we built the elementary schools, we built it as a school. And we built it for certain protocols, um, and we didn't, we didn't design it for that. And I don't know of any school that is, and.
Well, one of the things, one of the reasons it was glass when we were building was so that the administration would be able to see from all angles.
Call lines of sight.
Who was trying to approach the school.
In addition to the cameras.
As a safety measure, it was actually a safety measure.
It was actually put in as a safety measure.
Guns are just one thing that, that doesn't seem to protect, and I'm just, was curious to know, something like that, if there is something else.
If you put a steel door there.
Right.
Okay. Then, then that's.
Right, but you know what? I, I understand that there's a window, and I don't say to black out all your windows and seal your children in. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, their main, their main, their main entrance is gonna be a door. And if they have a window that they're gonna shoot through, we're hoping that somehow we stop them from climbing up and over the edge and into inside. I mean, they're not Superman, they're not flying through it, they're gonna have to climb through it. Whereas a door, it's a straight entrance. I just was curious, that's all.
The glass was put there to, for visibility, and what we're concerned about, we all sign our children in and out of school, we have a list of people who can or cannot pick up your child. This was to, to, basically, to keep any perpetrators, so you could see who was coming around the building.
Okay.
Where the children are. That's why it was designed.
The United, I'm sorry, the United States Secret Service, best trained armed guards in the world. They're not, the thing that fears them the most is one determined person with a plan. If you put a steel door on the front door, they're gonna go up through the side, they're going to figure out a way to harm somebody. What we have to do is have a school, and anticipate, make deterrence, but, like the chief said, we can't turn our schools into prisons. They should be palace.
Right, I understand.
They should be places of learning, and that's what they are.
Okay.
That's why we will, we take into account, and we advise the school, and we work with the architects, to make your schools, schools. But also to make deterrence, so there are safety measures built in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's, that's another point that the captain made. When we built the elementaries, we reviewed the plans with the police department, and that still is the best thinking, when the way we designed them.
I think the problem is that we are reacting to particular scenario which happens, and we are trying to prevent exactly the same scenario to play in front of us. But, um, what about kids going outside to play in the kindergarten? We have a play area. How are we going to protect this? What about sports events? What about students going outside to play tennis? How are we going to take care of that? So to some extent, it's, as tragic as it is, there's always a risk. And I also have three kids, and all of them went through these schools, and two of them are still in these schools. And you just tell them that there is a risk outside, and you prepare the child for this risk. And we, as those who are custodians of your children, when they are here, we will do our best, and we are doing our best. Some of this is being delegated to specialists, so to some extent, it's not for us, and also not for us as parents, to actually, maybe even, we can express our concerns, but it is not for us to, to dictate or to force some changes in some of these procedures to make us feel comfortable, because it will make our children less safe if the specialists are going to react to our emotions and change things in, in certain ways to simply, that they don't improve security for our kids. So to some extent, all these questions are great, but it's, it's a balance between kids being free and play, and not feel like they are in prison, and they are watched all the time, because we could have a situation that they are, and I lived in a system where you, when you cross particular places, like in old movies, there were guards with machine guns, and, and German shepherds, which were sniffing everything, and obviously, this is an extreme, we, we don't want, we live in a free society, and the kids should enjoy it, and should learn that. that. Things can happen, but at the same time, it's a free space, free, free, free place, and it's, it's hard. It's, we don't know the answers.
Thank you, Yanni.
Hi, I'm Bob Ekstrom. I have a son right now in middle school. Last year, I had a son in high school and one in elementary school. My wife works in town, too, so we've got a sampling of all the schools over the many years here. I wanted to reiterate the point that the woman before me said, I think her name was Kelly. I am surprised, I dropped my son off for a music program last year before school. Every single door in the school was wide open, and it was so easy to go in. I walked right in, any door I wanted to. I mean, 15 minutes later, there'll be a lockdown, but boy, that's a great Trojan horse, just sitting there. This particular one was not, I'm sorry, Fort Barton, but it's, I think it's pretty much all of the schools. Yeah, so that was, that was the biggest concern I was going to raise tonight, but since it was already raised, I wanted to say one other thing. Chief Superintendent, I respect the fact that you're proud of being proactive and not reactive here, but you know, over the number of years, I've had to go into the so-called non-trap schools, I guess, the middle school and the high school. Sons have forgotten lunches, and sons have forgotten homeworks, and sons have come in late, things like that. I buzzed that door, and I never have been asked, who am I, what am I doing here, anything. I mean, you really have to get into the school first, and you have to get to the guidance office to tell...
And that's, and those things, just what you said. We, we had the discussion earlier this week, and if parents find that that's not going on now.
Yeah.
Please let me know, and I'll, I'll address it myself.
Yeah, I think my point is, though, that's kind of reactive. And I'm wondering, you know, I was here when Columbine happened, and I was here when all the cameras were put in, and that speakerphone, and it was tough in the beginning. It was, you had to state your name, and you wouldn't get inside the door unless you, you know, were susceptible. A few years later, it wasn't like that at all. And now, right now, we're at that point where it's like this.
Well, I think human nature being what it is, and it's not an excuse. You become comfortable with the process. You think of yourselves, I think people in schools think of themselves in schools, and that's a safe place, and you know, they, the ladies in the office and the folks in the offices get busy, they got, became lax. What happened Friday, we are reacting to that, to be honest. We are correcting it, we are fine tuning what we do. That, you know, it was a wake-up call for every school district in the state and across the country. Revisit what you do, and make sure you do it the right way, and you can't just, after a while, you know, kind of, human nature takes a course, because we don't have professionals at the doors, you know, we don't have security folks, and we just have to do a better job of checking people in, whether it's at the high school, middle school, or at the elementary school. You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. We do need to do a better job.
If you see something, say something. You're being buzzed in and no one's asking you who you are.
We do, and I, and I mean it. Please let me know, or the principal know, and we'll, I'll address it right as soon as I can.
I mean, and we're all parents, and I know that many of the administrators know who we are. And when I went around on Thursday, what day was it, month Tuesday, collecting canned goods, every single one of them said, who are you and why are you here? And I know they know who I, every single building know, you know, they know who I am.
Happened yesterday.
That's exactly what...
Happened yesterday at Fort Barton.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Problem is, are these attacks are spread out such a way that, you know, after three or four years, we all get complacent, and I don't want to be in a meeting like this three years from now, doing the same thing.
That's why didn't we ask who you were?
Yes.
Right.
Right. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your insight. Thank you.
My name's Paul Rosier. I have my son in elementary school. My biggest thing is, is the buzzer thing. It's, why can't somebody go to the door? Identify the person, identify that their hands are empty, and then let them in. I mean, cameras don't do justice.
Well, we would, it's a good question.
Literally only a minute from the office.
It's, we have a per, no, to answer the question is, it's a manpower question. We have one secretary in our elementary schools who's responsible for doing multitude of tasks, and for her, we would need, to answer your question, to do that, we would need an additional, at least one, we would need a dedicated staff.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not asking them like, you know, first thing in the morning when you guys are crazy.
No, but...
During the day, when somebody comes during the day, in the middle of the day, what are they doing at the school? Why are they there? What's their, why are they there?
Well, that's, well, that's...
Are they picking a child up?
Well, that's why we need, they're going to be asking, and some parents may be put out, you know me, I'm on the PTO. Why are you asking my name? Why are you asking my name? Why are you asking why I'm here? That's what they're going to see.
His mother was a teacher.
Well, she wasn't.
Oh.
She wasn't.
But either way...
But those are the things, but the point is, we have to question everyone.
Right.
Yeah, you should identify the person and make sure their hands are empty.
And whether, we're not at the point yet of saying to parents coming in, or people coming to our schools, we're going to search you, or go through a metal detector. We're, at least as a community, we're not there yet. And, you know, you can see, granted, if you see somebody, but then, let's say they, you notice they had a bulge in their hip, well, then, you're also the person that's going to call the code that we need. So you might be injured, the person answering the door, who's supposed to be doing the, you know, the notification, so it would require, to answer your question, it's a very good question, but we would need additional, we would need to dedicate someone during the day for that.
That also goes back to the lady asking about the glass.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's just glass now, but there's obviously, there's a lot of glass out there that can take a lot of abuse. And the longer it takes somebody to get into the school, gives them time to get there. We're not trying to make it a prison, but we're trying to give them as much time as possible. Because I think it was 20 minutes he was in that school, before the police showed up?
Yeah.
Ten? I heard 20. Even 10 minutes is a long time.
So I can sort of, kind of recapitulate some, some themes here. One is, we live in a broken world. There are bad people out there that will do us harm, but we want to live in a free world as well, where we can exercise our freedoms, and part of that is having a school system, a school that looks like a school. And every school, depending on what level of security you want to set for it, will have vulnerabilities, no matter what it looks like.
Yeah, anything does.
But perhaps that's something that we need to review as well. Should, should it, should it be a, you know, in-person greeter at the door? That, that again, is a budget consideration ultimately, too.
You walk into grocery, not grocery stores, you walk around to these gas stations and stuff, and the glass that's between them and you is about two inches thick. It's still glass, still see-through it.
Right.
And getting to him, he would definitely have the police there long before I got to him.
And, and maybe that's, that's what we need to look at, too.
That's, it's just glass. I could kick it with a steel toe and bust it.
Although I think, you know, again, the specifics of the case on, in Newtown, I believe he shot his way into the school, so...
You ain't, but, that's the whole point of the glass at the gas stations, is they are bulletproof.
But you'd have to have bulletproof glass all around.
Well, no, we're trying to slow him, because he's going to go, his main goal, his main goal is to go through the main door, like the lady was saying. So if you can slow him down...
Unless like Mr. Sergeant said, unless he knows you now have bulletproof glass doors.
Right, and then he seeks another...
He's got to find a way to get in. So it's, how much do we...
Where do we draw the line?
Where do we draw the line?
But having glass is very simple to pass through.
I will say this, since I've started working with the schools in 2005, the, the changes they've made in the security protocol and the way they respond to the, the problems is 1,000% better. The way the police department responds, there's training that we do on a regular basis that prepares us for these situations.
Right.
The schools have done a phenomenal job over the last six or seven years, trying to make the schools safer, not only safer, but in the way they deal with the children, families, and the other professionals. So while there's always room for improvement, I can say as a semi-outside observer, that the schools are doing a phenomenal job making the schools safer and a better place to be.
My biggest concern is keeping him out as long as possible, if there ever was, to give you as much time.
That's absolute.
That's why we've been getting to the door, making who they are, they're not bringing anything into the school. That was my concern. I've pretty much, everybody else mentioned the other stuff that I was thinking about.
Thank you very much. Very good point, very good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. I'm Carrie Tabor. I have a daughter in fifth grade and a daughter in second grade at Ranger School. I have to say, I graduated going on 20 years from this school system. In 20 years, the, I have to commend the educators, they have so much more improved. The security in the schools has so much more improved. What I wonder about is, there seems to be a lot of, a large support network in the middle school and the high school level for children that are at risk, our quote-unquote "problem" children. How much of a support do we have at the elementary level? Because, as we all know, our children are maturing so much faster than they did 10, 15, 20 years ago. They're dealing with so many more emotional, physical things than what we dealt with 20, 30, 40 years ago. What are we dealing with as far as a first grader who loses his father, a second grade dau, a second grade girl who, there's some kind of sexual molestation? I mean, what are, how are we identifying these children at that level and helping them as they go through the school system? Are they, are these children at the elementary level getting the support that they need?
I'll let...
Marla, could you please, could Marla?
Marla, Marla, the principals, but while Marla comes up.
Marla, could you tell?
One of the things we have kept is our, we're one of the few districts in Newport County that has at least two elementary guidance counselors. We have three schools, but we have two. Many districts just have gone to one. We have school psychologists through Newport County Regional that will help, just not students, Marla Schaffler was a, really, an exemplar. Marla was a regional employee who did more than just test kids for learning disabilities. They, we access those folks all the time. Now, how do we find out about a six-year-old? We rely on the parent. That's the communication piece. We rely on parents to tell us this happened. We do have the counselors available, you know, that the child can go see, but we do at that, especially at that young age, we do rely on the parents, much more so than maybe the middle or high school where kids will, will, will go see a counselor.
We also rarely among most of our brother and sister districts is we have a nurse.
That's correct. That's right. That's an excellent point.
That also serves that role.
Yep.
I mean, many have gotten rid of...
Of the nurses. They have traveling nurses now.
Would I like to have, would we like to, would I like to have for the district, a school social worker? Dedicated to work with families? Absolutely. I'd like to have one for every school.
This is what, you know, we're talking about, Jim, the town council, we're talking about mental health issues. Mental health issues.
Absolutely.
Are identified in early childhood.
Yes, they are.
And they follow these children straight through their adulthood, and whether or not they need medication, behavioral, psychological, whatever they need, are we helping these kids through the school system at that level?
We are to the folks, just not the trouble, not the problem kids.
Yeah.
But we do address all children as they're brought to us, and we try to do what we can do. We're also confined also under HIPAA, you know, HIPAA laws. At one point, we used to, if we had children that were troubled, especially at the high school age, we would, we would do a crisis intervention meeting, and we would say, we're really concerned about the mental health of this student. We used to be able to say, you need to document mom and dad, or mom or dad, that this student got the help, was seen, and we're, basically, someone's telling us the child's okay to return. Department of Ed did away with that provision a few years ago. We no longer can do that. We know a lot about our students, probably more than anybody outside of family members. We know quite a bit, but, and Marla can speak to it. We, we direct the parents as best we can to the resources, and we hope that, and it's sometimes it comes down to, and it's very sad, do they have insurance?
Yeah.
Or not? You know, that's the social safety, that's a bigger question, but, you know, we do point parents as best we can in the direction, you know, where they can get the help, because you're absolutely right. Just like with learning disabilities, teaching kids to read early, the earlier you can identify or be able to identify regardless of age, the sooner you can intercede and take the appropriate steps. Marla, you want to?
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, I don't want to...
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marla Schaffler. I'm a retired school psychologist. I've worked in the Tiverton School System for 34 years, so I can speak to some of the concerns that I'm hearing here tonight, and maybe allay some of the concerns that you have about mental health issues in the schools. And I will say that there are school psychologists, there is a school psychologist assigned to every single school in the system, so they are very proactive, they are well-trained, they have the background to be able to address those mental health issues, and they work in alignment with the guidance counselors and with the principals. I want to speak a little bit to the crisis policy, because I think, I have to talk about that, because I think even within our region, we have a pretty exceptional crisis policy to address some of those mental health issues that you're concerned about. So that when we have students in crisis, what we have done, and our, our policy has been looked at by many lawyers, it's educationally sound, ethically sound, it's legal, and what we have is a tandem approach where it's not one person making a decision about what we're going to do when we see a student in crisis. It's a team approach, which really increases the, the safety and the knowledge base in terms of making decisions to make sure that those kids get the services they need. Do we need more services? Of course. I mean, we're tapped out, but I will tell you, having worked myself here for 34 years, that we're doing things not just as reactionary, which is a concern to me, because I think every time we hear some of the, you know, the things that happened on Friday, Columbine, we're reactionary. I think this school system, I'm very proud of the fact that we are very proactive in this school system, that we have taken wonderful steps to try to build a community of inclusiveness in our school community at large. And I can't say that, that every school system has that. I think our school system has it. I can speak for Tiverton High School. We've had, you know, the peer helping network for quite some time. Kids do refer their peers for services. It's, and kids are looking out for kids. And I think we've instilled that in our students here. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I was at Picassett on Monday, we're working with staff, and I will tell you that they are the most incredibly dedicated staff. You know, the teachers that I talked to on Monday were talking about what they could do better than what they're actually, what they're doing now to improve things, to ensure the safety of your children. They are their children. I will tell you that there is this sense of community in our schools. I'm not going to say that it's absolutely perfect, that nothing could ever happen here, but I think we have built a foundation, a prevention, prevent, a foundation in our school system that would help to prevent some of the horrendous things that happened on Friday in Connecticut. I think we are really doing an amazing job. I think we, what are, some of the issues that we have is that the mental health services in, in the community, in the state, are not as good as I would like. Having been here for a long time, I will tell you that this, it's, it's sometimes hard to get those services. And I think if anything you could do as a community is to talk to your, you know, your senators and your congressmen, and say that this is something that's needed, that we need more money to be in our communities so that we can access those services. And I think it's imperative, especially at elementary level, that, you know, we get those services and identify kids as early as possible. But I will tell you, in terms of the frontline staff, in terms of the school psychologists that are working along with the guidance counselors and the principals, they are really doing a pretty amazing job in terms of providing those kinds of services for your kids. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, because I can say I've, I've actually worked in every single school in town, from, I've, I've been in all the schools, including the middle school and, and of course, the high school. So I don't know if you have any specific questions that I could answer as a mental health specialist.
Are the teachers themselves...
Excuse me?
Are the teachers themselves educated in like science that they should be looking for?
Yes, actually, they have been. You know, I know certainly at Picassett, which is where I spend an enormous amount of my time, I, I did an awful lot of consultation with the teachers about those kinds of things, and they were, and what they do is, if they have questions, they come to the school psychologist, because that, we're trained. That's, that's what you're paying us for. You're paying us for our expertise, and that's what we have. The expertise to understand some of those issues that you're concerned about, and what do we do? And not necessarily in a, in a knee-jerk reactionary kind of way, but how can we build that community so that it buffers things, that it provides services for the kids that need it, for the kids that are vulnerable? We, I will tell you, in, two years ago, we had this amazing year-long anti-bullying campaign here at Tiverton High School that was amazing. Kids are still using the name acclaim, that stop it mantra, which I think is fantastic. All those things are important. It's, it's a multi-pronged process that I believe makes the difference. It's not, it's not just about gun control. It's about building a school atmosphere of inclusion, of community, where we're looking out for each other. And I think that is, that is here. Does it give us a hundred percent guarantee that nothing is gonna happen? No, we, I don't think we could ever give that guarantee. But I think we have incredible building blocks in this community that I'm not sure every community can boast about. But I, having been here and having my own children go through the school system here, I can tell you, we have taken, made incredible strides in building that sense of community in our schools.
Thank you, Amala.
Thank you.
Just one thing I would like to add. Even though we share guidance counselors and school adjustment counselors, I mean, uh, school counselors, if there's an emergency, if they're not scheduled to be at the school, those people are reassigned. So we deal with emergencies immediately. And it's not just, okay, the council's not here on Monday and we can't deal with it until Wednesday. If there's an emergency, the counselors, wherever they're assigned that day, will come to the building. And also the school psychologist will be at the building to deal with those emergencies during those times.
Jim?
Sorry, I just have two more points to make. And before I make those points, a couple of the statements that we previously said. When I was a teacher for a few years, I was not formally trained. And the school that I worked in did not have those services to train us. So I think it is important that, if we do have, it's actually great news to hear that we have someone on staff that can actually help teachers identify some issues that she might not be able to catch with every student. You can't watch everybody all the time. I think it's great that we actually had that and possibly even make it stronger. So to my point, so an SRO officer in the building. I worked in schools where we did not have one, and I worked in a school where there was at least two. That school was Bedford High School. There's at least two or three SROs in the building, being so many students. And in Westport, they even have one. And I can tell you that it is actually a double, it actually is a highway of communication between the police department and the schools. And what's great about that is the police department gets to learn a lot about the individuals that are coming through the community. And of, of course, I don't want to bring up negative things like, they get to identify who might be the issues as they grow older. But they, they might actually be able to help with services and prevent them from becoming those individuals who grow older and become constant problems. I went through high school here, and there were the people in high school who were problems. And as they graduated, they become your problem. Which obviously isn't the way to approach that problem. So having a resource officer in the schools actually is a valuable, very valuable resource for the schools and the police department. I think that as a town council member, the second point is now the budgetary issues. Now, I've heard a lot of people in discussions all over the country, what are we gonna do with schools? Do we, you know, bulletproof the glass? If, I think, just estimating what, what it costs just to bulletproof this entire building, we're probably in the millions of dollars. So we have to look at cost-effective ways to help our schools be safer. And I think putting us, an officer in our buildings might be the best way to do that. And also minimize the amount of tax dollars we'll have to afford to do that as well. So I believe that the, the police chief, there's only twenty-seven active duty officers in the department now?
Yes, we had one graduate yesterday.
Oh. So twenty-eight?
Uh, no, it was twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And I understand that it is a long process to possibly bring on, we'll, we'll say, three more additional officers. It would be a long process.
It would take, if we put in officers in the class, July one, it's a six-month training class, they would not be cleared for the road until March of twenty fourteen. Every time we have a vacancy, we drop drastically. And of course, overtime proportionally.
And I believe, how many, and does roughly two or three officers on duty in one shift?
We have a minimum staff of three. We have thirty-three square miles. We have no super highways to get from one end of town to the other. So I have two officers working in the north end. I have one who's vulnerable in the back, in the south end, and vice versa. We have one drunk driving, the rest pre or clear the town. Not supposed to know that in May. Comment about your, the ability of having SRO in the school, interacting with the, the children and the students and possibly knowing our future players, as we like to call them sometimes? I can tell you this, we do have a juvenile hearing board in town. And the SRO has designated or directed some of them. That juvenile hearing board is probably more strict than the courts could ever be. Because we run it, which could involve making, writing essays, letters of apology, restitution, and all which the parents don't pay. We don't allow the parents to pay, we make the child pay. And they have no criminal record when it's done. So that juvenile hearing board has been extremely beneficial to, to any SRO at the time. When we had him here, would direct some of the, the people who are on the edge, who may become problematic for the future. And also, I also did one window in the police station, one, one window, roughly three foot by five, and that was nine hundred dollars. Yeah, one piece of bulletproof glass. So it is string.
Yeah, financially, we can't, we can't afford that. I mean, we could possibly financially afford one or two, maybe two police officers in a school full-time, possibly. We'll have to talk about that, obviously.
Yeah, I really, I, I don't want anything off the table.
Okay, I just kind of say.
We'll have that financial discussion, but tonight, what, what we think we need to do.
Well, I think that having an SRO in, in the building is probably the most cost-effective way. I mean, we, we had a gentleman come up and say, we want to prevent, increase the time for, for responsible. We have an officer on site already. I mean, they can automatically intervene.
Today during the bomb threat, Sergeant Cabral.
Perfect example, perfect example.
We cleared the building. Before we got here, you had to clear the building of our personnel and go get the students out. I think he was actually clear with cafeteria.
Fortunately, the one day, a week that he's there now was today.
Yeah, the last point with SRO is, I know, seeing it myself, they became, they just, they develop very good rapport with the students. And they also get very valuable information from those students. If things are happening, then the students may not feel comfortable telling other adults. They may tell someone that they can trust, that they won't feel retribution for, that will, that'll help serve, prevent any type of disasters or a party where kids would be getting intoxicated and driving home and preventing tragedy that they deal with a while ago.
As I said before, they do feel very comfortable and actually resist that officer during the summer months when they're not in school because they have that before.
And then, obviously, I think as a, as a community, as a town, we have to take this matter seriously in making sure that not just schools are safe, but possibly all of our public buildings. We have awareness everywhere because obviously we solidify the schools, no other targets, so churches will be. Or easy, and all be an easy target. So I think as a whole community, we have to definitely aware, raise awareness and also support our police department in our schools to make sure that we're all safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, just quickly, my name is Mark Namarowski. I have one child in kindergarten, one in first grade, and one not in school yet. I think maybe to, to have an idea about the, the door security issue. You have an overworked secretary trying to, you know, let people in. I don't know how many bus monitors we have. It certainly seems like we have a whole lot of buses. To add four sort of, you know, one for each school bus monitor type position, but for the door for a couple of hours a day, I think that might be a, an expensive solution. I'd even be willing to sacrifice a bus monitor or two. You know, talk about reactionary, that, that seems to be a position that, you know, maybe is a little excessive. Absolutely, right. So just an inexpensive solution, I think, to, to that particular issue. And maybe just another set of eyes. Certainly, they could be trained by the police officers to, you know, things to look for. You don't need any high level of training to, to sort of spot a bad guy, I guess, maybe. Might be a good way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Janini. I have a daughter in the middle school and a son at Pecasset. Is there a way to, for the middle school, like, once you're in the middle school, you're in, like, you're upstairs before you get to the office, like, you have to go in and then, then you have to go into the office. But if you, who's to say they're gonna go into the office? Is there a way to, like, secure that area so they can't get upstairs? And, yeah, the high school too, but at least, I mean, they can't see, and you can't see from the office.
Right, and it's a good, good question. I mean, we can look at it.
I mean, I know it's, it's funny.
Because again, because, and you're looking at the difference in design from, you know, that was sixty, that was seventy-six, this one was sixty-six.
Right.
Where there were no buzzers, it was, you know, everything was open. Um, we, you're right, you, you, there's that door, the hall stairwell.
Because once you're, once they buzz that door.
And the same with the high school, if, if, you know, you're, you're in, you know, at that point. And that's why it's, at least in the short term, extremely critical that we start saying, who are you? What are you doing? You know, what state your purpose? And then in the meantime, you know, maybe look at a way if, but then we also have to have fire codes. But we have, we can't lock doors from the inside.
Right.
You know, you gotta have the crash doors, so, you know, we need to work on our fire codes. You know, not to say it can't be done. It's just, you know, something that we need to consider to look at. But it's, it's a very good, very good point.
Yeah, that one, just as soon as I thought about it, I was just like, because my daughter's there and, you know, you think about it.
And on both sides you have it, because that's the way they put the stairwells where they put them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You flew out of it?
Anyone, actually. Actually, I just wanted to suggest for an extra person in the office, possibly parent volunteers. I know I myself am there a lot for PTO. And we have a meeting for an hour, hour and a half or whatever. And I would have no problem staying later to help out and do whatever I could. And I'm sure there are other parents that would.
It's a great idea.
So maybe you could have the volunteer manning the phones, for instance, that are simple.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea for us to look into.
The staff person, letting them in, yeah.
Certainly at the elementary level. We could look at that. You're right, because we have, as unfortunately, and I'm a parent, same with me, used to do a lot with my kids when they were your child's age. But then as they get older, all of a sudden, it's harder, for, for parents, that is, to, to get them. That doesn't mean we couldn't obviously look at it at both, at all levels. But certainly at the elementaries, that's a very good idea.
And there's one other thing also is, you know, I am only familiar with Ranger School. And there is a lot of glass. And I understand the cost of bulletproof grass and all of that. But in the classrooms, they also don't have closets, they don't have bathrooms, other than the kindergarten. Are there other things that are out there that could possibly be used in the classroom to help? You know, you see online, they have bulletproof backpacks, which I never knew existed.
I heard that too.
But are there other things that are out there that they could have in the school that could possibly be a tool?
We can obviously look into it. I, I, you know, we'll, we'll look into all these recommendations to see if we can implement them. I don't know to answer your question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I didn't know they were bulletproof backpacks either.
I heard that today.
I didn't either.
It was just a thought that maybe there's something else, yeah, that we could possibly put in there that's more cost-effective that.
And they were selling out. That's the sad part about it.
Yes, I heard it today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know. Yes?
Hello, my name's Morgan Derosier. I have a son in kindergarten at Fort Barton. And today, I'm not gonna lie, when I got the phone call about the high school, I was too afraid to send my son to school. So I kept him home. And I don't, I, I don't want to keep my son away from school. You know, I shouldn't feel like that. This is school. This is supposed to be a safe place. And to get to the point where it's affecting my son's education and gonna be my daughter, it, it just can't happen. So my question being, with the police officers in school, have we looked at our retired police officers? Because I know, personally, I know some that would probably do it in a heartbeat. You know, and we're paying them to do road detail. How, how much are we paying them to do that?
But we're not paying them. In contrast, the Ohio is a natural place then.
But would some of them be willing to, you know, if they're willing to stand outside in the cold and all that doing road detail, what about in our schools? This way, you don't have to wait for somebody new to come up. You don't have to wait till two thousand and fourteen. Now, we have somebody experienced. We can get somebody in there.
It is applicable to have someone who would want to do that. Many officers retire. And then state law would kick in as far as them being certified police officers after a period of time. Again, it's not monetary, but insurances, they can't, all my specials do not carry guns. They're trafficked, the only.
Right.
Many of them, they're not allowed to, just by protocol and insurance purposes, cannot carry guns. That's one of the things. Ironically, my daughter called me from California crying about sending my grandson to kindergarten.
Yeah.
So I, I understand completely what you're, what you're feeling.
I was scared to death. Because, I mean, honestly, the first thing I thought was somebody had brought it up before, smokescreen. All the focus is over here. Who's gonna protect my son over here?
I understand completely. There are sick people like that.
Had there been an officer, I can't say I wouldn't have been, because that's my baby.
Of course.
But maybe I would not have been so afraid to send him. So I guess my question is, how close are we to getting somebody in the schools?
I am, I am putting more, more of my resources toward putting an SRO. But I'll be honest with you, I'm not putting one in every school. I would like to rotate the officer through the different schools. I'm putting some of the resources toward that. Mr. Rurk and I have discussed this previously. September, we discussed it. You know, of course, I'm always trying to get money from him anyhow, you know. But seriously, we are looking at this. We are moving forward. Other, other funds have come forward. We've put Ken back in. We don't have a man for this purpose, but we've been creative in trying to get this because I feel extremely, that this is extremely important thing to, to address.
I do too, definitely.
So we are putting, besides resources, a great deal of thought into this.
And I think we need to be reactive. It's great to be proactive. I don't think those people in Connecticut would have ever thought that would happen to them. And I don't think we'd be having this meeting today if it didn't. We would never feel that way. So I think being reactive is what we now have to do, unfortunately. And it's just the world that we're, that we're living in.
Yes. Send, send your child to school. Your school is a safe place.
And, you know.
We're here tonight to make it safer.
Yes, yes. And it's, it's nothing against them. I had to go with my heart because I didn't want to say, you know, well, why?
Sure.
So, but yes.
Nothing but today with mom.
I was scared. I was scared.
And again, as I said before, we're in new territory.
Yeah.
So our parents, so parents like yourself would, will, and I'm sure when we, when I sent it, I thought about it. I said, but on the other hand, I need to send the message to the parents to know everything's okay. And to say, with the younger parent, with parents like yourself, of younger children in mind, it's okay. We have a problem, we're addressing it.
We're fixing it, right.
But your children are okay.
Yep.
That's part of, the upside of face technology, we can communicate much faster. But also, things can get ahead of you. You know, that's why we, we try to communicate for everything.
Right.
Maybe sometimes you hate that call, you know, around six o'clock about a dance or, you know, don't forget it's pick up the, you know, cake day or whatever, hat day, or whatever. But that's what we have the system for. The, the previous committee, many of the members here felt it was very important that we have it and to use it more frequently than we did and we have. But I certainly understand, you know, why you'd be apprehensive. And if any parent ever, you know, parents, they can, it's, we're new ground. And how you handle it, it's gonna take us a while, all of us, to adapt to it and how we feel about certain things. And we always, and someone used the term default, default to the parent's decision to keep your home, child home or not due to a particular situation. You know best. And we certainly wouldn't say otherwise.
Right, right, yeah. It is a great system. I, I think the phone calls are, you know, fantastic. And the schools are bar none. I graduated from this school and I know it's safe, you know. I can also tell you every door that's easily to get in and out of.
Talk to Captain Jones.
I can tell you every door, you know.
Sergeant Cabral.
Yeah, yeah. And, but I know they're safe. And I love the phone calls. But I, I really think, especially this day and age, unfortunately, it is very important to get somebody.
That's why you call your mom.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think it was Mr. Exstrom who said, we need to, which is what happened, Dr. Columbine, that we had SROs and everyone forgets, we need to make sure that we don't forget. And that we continue to pull.
And I.
No, we determined this to be a priority for safety in our schools. We don't want it going away, and we're not gonna let it go away. Because it is easy to get complacent and.
And I, and Deb, you said it when we were talking the other day. I believe this is a nine eleven moment for educators and police departments. Not that Columbine was horrific, but this made it even, this was even worse than that. And if you can imagine. And I, and much like after nine eleven, as a country, things change. I believe that things will change and it won't be something that we become lax in, in the next year or two.
Well, we'll be sure they change.
Oh, absolutely.
We're gonna get you in the door.
You can't blame yourself for be, becoming lax. Actually, the government, years ago, we were able to write grants for these SROs and we were able to get, hire these people. The government has since stopped these grants, even, even to that level. So they also became complacent. And so we're gonna address this thing. We are gonna, we're gonna put the resources toward it. And please be confident, I can, we will, I will make every effort, and Captain will make every effort to get an SRO back in the schools this year, this school year.
This year, yeah. I'm going to pick them up.
My name is Kristen Lasorda, and I have a daughter in kindergarten at Ranger. And I know they do the lockdowns. Do they do that often where, like, the morning and afternoon kindergarten gets involved?
Do they do that often, where like the morning and afternoon kindergarten gets involved?
That's one of the, one of the things we always do.
Yeah.
We make sure that any drill, and there's different types of drills, we do in the morning and in the afternoon because of the kindergarten happen.
So we also, and we also have, I know, I can speak for Pecasset School too. We practice for both AM and PM kindergarten and preschool, so they can also practice.
Oh, okay. All right. Everything else I was wondering has already been taken care of, so, but that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Could we just stand, please, and have a moment of silence?